All right, welcome everybody to tonight's work session. We'll get started with item one on tonight's agenda. And just a reminder that during the work session, we do not have a public participation portion. We do have two of those in the actual council meeting. If we do have a council member that wants to ask someone a question from the audience, for whatever reason, they may engage you though. First item is Battlesworth area discussion. We have a gentleman that would like to make a presentation to the city council. You'll come up to the front of the table, sir, and present your name and address for the record, and give us your talking points, please.
I'm Fred Killian. I live at 19313 Seneca Highway 98. I have been privileged to grow up in Fairhope. I live right there on 98. I have been...
See if the microphone's on.
Y'all got my name, and don't even do that again. I have been concerned about the issue of Mr. Breland filling 10 and 1/2 acres of wetlands that is directly across the street from me. He, I'll get into some of the history. I have, I know that Mr. Breland has filed an action against the city for his not being able to fill the wetlands. I have obtained from the attorney who represented the city, depositions of Mr. Breland, deposition of Mr. Hemphill, all the pleadings, the briefs that were filed in the court, and the Supreme Court ultimate order. I had heard that there may be some concern that the city had lost the case by the Supreme Court reversing what the trial court had done. I'm an attorney, I'm a retired attorney. I practiced law for 54 years, civil trial practice. I thought it might be of some help to have another opinion as to what the issues really are. I have compiled a letter to the city that kind of sets out my position. I have compiled a chronology going back to 1999 and coming forward to date, which outlines all of the activity that was done with regard to his attempting to fill it in. I filed a Freedom of Information request of the Corps of Engineers. I obtained their entire file on what they had done, and I know I've got a limited amount of time, and that's why I prepared the documents to leave to you. Let me go through what I consider to be some major points. If you would look, if you would look what I have prepared in the booklet, not the letter and not the chronology right now. If you look in the booklet, first page you come to is the area that Mr. Breland is attempting to fill. That's TD Swamp. That's a portion of TD Swamp that has been there for umpteen years. It consists of some 200 and some odd acres. If you, in our area, we are concerned with stormwater drainage. If you will look at the next several pages, you will see photographs of, taken by some of the people in our neighborhood, and they are attached. And if you look at the top of the page, you'll see the date when they were taken. They start, I think, in '05, and come on up to 2017. These are not all of the floods we've had. They don't include that, I call it a 100-year rain, a 500-year rain that we had a couple of years ago. The Mondays, home has continued to be flooded. You see him standing in the water out in his backyard, I think it is. So, at least the pictures show you the problems that we already have existing. Now, let's move up to, Mr. Breland bought 64 acres of this swampland, some of it was uplands. He did that in 1999. Before he bought the property, he went over it with Art Hosey. Art Hosey is a representative of the Corps of Engineers, and Hosey pointed out to him that he couldn't fill, that most of it was wetlands, and that he couldn't fill on the Anyway, with his application to the Corps to get a permit, he submitted the first permit and asked to be able to build Battlesworth 1, Battlesworth 2. That consisted of 18 lots along Nelson and Hurried Road. Most of it was uplands, but he asked for permission to fill about .3 acres of the property for making the lots even. Major point, Fairhope granted him permission to do that. That's back in 2002, 2001, so he could have gone on with that program, but he didn't. I think at that time, he saw, well, let me do a bigger subdivision. So, he presented to the Corps with his application, a subdivision request, and you, that shows the plat, it is Exhibit 4 in that book. And if you see highlighted in yellow, that, that's the wetlands. Anything below the yellow are wetlands. And you see that he has requested permission to build 36, 38 lots, 20-some out of which would be on wetlands. When he applied, when he made his application, the Corps gave, to the Corps, the Corps gave notice to the public. You will find in there where there are objections to the Corps. Mr. Breland, in his deposition, says that there were only a couple of people who objected. Well, I had had prepared, there was a volume of people who objected to that. Baldwin County, you'll find it in, Baldwin County wrote the Corps and said, wait a minute, because, because the Corps is the only entity that he submitted that subdivision plat to, okay? And Baldwin County wrote a letter back to the Corps, and it said, "We have a subdivision regulation that we do not allow houses to be built on filled wetlands." And the Corps then sent that letter to Mr. Breland. All of this is in the outline, all of this is in the outline that I've given you. They asked Mr. Breland's response. Mr. Breland responded, and so they said, "It's against regulations, we don't allow that." Corps asked Mr. Breland, "What are you going to do with that?" There's a written response to the Corps that says, "Well, I acknowledge that I have to get permission from the authorities, but, and if I don't get permission, it won't be built." Now, Fairhope also objected. Fairhope said, "And it's subdivision regulations." Be that as it may, I've got to move forward, I only have a limited amount of time. The Corps issued a permit. It's in there, and you can see in the index where the Corps permit is. If I don't do anything else, let me emphasize, the Corps said, "Mr. Breland, we will let you fill in 10 and 1/2 acres of wetlands." Okay, he bought 64 acres. We'll let you fill in 10 and 1/2 acres, but for you to do that, there's some conditions precedent to your being able to fill, to go in with that subdivision. One, you have to buy some mitigation credits, 21 mitigation credits. It appears that Mr. Breland did that. What I am telling you here is what the, what Fairhope has done through its legal counsel in doing all of this, okay? So, at any rate, it appears that he complied with that request. Second request, very important request, is that you put 30-some-odd acres of that acreage you have under a conservative easement, and that, and when you do that, you submit to us the document that you're going to accomplish that with, and let us have it before it's recorded. The Corps file, this goes on from 1999 to now 2017, okay? The Corps wanted to be able to look at what he was going to do. So, he has to comply with that requirement. This goes to the heart of whether he has a case against Fairhope. Did he comply with that requirement? I'm standing here and tell you, absolutely not, okay? And let me, let me show you how he didn't do it. You've got in there a deed that Mr., well, we move on up to he wants to start filling. He got his permit in '02. At that time, Fairhope didn't have an ordinance about a land disturbance permit that existed in its extraterritorial jurisdiction. Your ordinance was 1,000. But, he didn't start anything to try to fill until 2008. We're talking about six years. In that period of time, Fairhope enacts ordinance 1313, and it says, "You've got to get a land disturbance permit from us before you disturb any land out there and doing anything." His, his, his permit for the subdivision Battlesworth 1 and 2, it expired, okay? In 2008, he's thinking about, okay, I'm going to try to start this subdivision. But in 2006, he's got ordinance 1313 he's got to comply with. If you have any question about whether he should, Tom Hemphill was his engineer who was helping him prepare all of this. There is a document that I've given you where Tom Hemphill writes Mr. Breland and says, "You've got to comply with 1313," and it's, and all these other ordinances. Let me move forward. Mr. Breland, to, to, to show us a facade that he compiled with the conservatorship, there's a quitclaim deed that he executes, it's, it's in '07, and he executes it to the Weeks Bay Protective Association, don't remember the full name. Then, that association, the same day, puts a conservative easement on the 30-some-odd acres. I think Mr. Breland was thinking he had to comply with the Corps permit before he started his activity in March of '08. But then something, then he got to thinking, wait a minute, in my, this is me thinking, I've created an illegal subdivision with what I've done. I don't have approval on it. So, Mr. Breland, and, Mr. Breland executes another document, and he says, "My conveyance, I declare null and void. It was flawed, it was no effect, and I'm declaring it null and void." In that, he says, so now he's got the title back in him. He had attempted to convey title of this association. Now, he's got the title back in him, and he includes in this document, "I'm going to establish an easement in the quarters with title such and such of the code." No specifics. If you look at the Code file, Corps file, you'll find where there was an exchange a couple of times about the particular document the Corps would approve. He never sought the approval of it at all. Let's jump forward a minute. 2013, he, Fairhope had to stop him in 2008 because he hadn't acquired a permit. Fairhope had to stop him in 2011, when he attempted again to go in and disturb that area. In 2013, the Corps looked through its file, and it could not find where Mr. Breland had complied with that condition, that he had to put this property under conservatorship. So, he says, "Send me a copy." Tom Hemphill then sends the Corps, what does he send the Corps? In 2013, the documents of the quitclaim deed, the conservative easement, does he send them where he had nullified that? No. So, the Corps thinks, they've got some documents that, when I got the entire file of the Corps, I got in touch with the Corps. I have been to the Corps, and I've talked to the lady in charge there. I gave her the document where he had nullified what he, what the Corps had required him to do, and she was astonished. So, he, he didn't get the Corps' permission to do the document he was supposed to. Secondly, he sends them some documents that he had voided. Now, let's talk about the void document, the one that he nullified. It's got a date of January 30, 2008 on it. He signs, the representative of Weaklands Bay Association signs, and they put over their signature, "January 30, 2008." See, that's going to be before he's, he's starting to fill. But if you look at the notary attestation, he, that wasn't executed until April the 14th of 2008. So, here we've got a little more issue with, you know, whether things are above board or not. He was stopped, if you look at what I've given to you, you'll see photographs of the 2008 attempt where Mr. Breland went in there and tried to fill. He's dozed down trees, he's done, he's done a lot in Fairhope, issued a stop order, which he said, now he says you can't do. The third issue, the third condition that the Corps put on him, was you have to get the permission of the local authorities, and that means Baldwin County, that means Fairhope. Fairhope and Baldwin County had their subdivision regulations in play, they had ordinance, Fairhope had ordinance 1313 in play, and then, as we come on forward, Fairhope passed some additional ordinances. I've got them outlined. There's a wetlands ordinance that's set out in there, and there's a red clay ordinance. So, when we get to 2011, there are at least four ordinances of Fairhope that require that he get a land disturbance permit, which he's never done. He's never complied, and the letter from Hemphill, his expert, says to him, "You've got to get permission." Well, let's look at, let's look at where we are with that. In 2011, I assume Mr. Breland looks to see what he can do to go ahead and fill. He, he's told by his expert, "You've got to get a surveyor out there, you've got to get an engineer, you've got to do all these things." So, Mr. Breland hires Row Engineering, it's in, you've got a copy of it. Row Engineering says to Mr. Breland, "Well, what you have proposed doesn't comply with the regular, the ordinances. What you've got is you have presented an engineering document that says it's based on a 25-year rainfall, and the ordinances require 100-year rainfall. So, what, the criteria that you've got for setting up this subdivision, which your detention ponds and whatever, which Mr. Hemphill says will not, will not apply." So, I guess when he looked at that, he decided, that's when he decided he'd go ahead and sue Fairhope. I've been over all of the pleadings. In my opinion, Fairhope has a complete defense to whatever Mr., the money damage claim that Mr. Breland's filed. I know you're going to mediation next week with it. I think that's next week. And, and the Supreme Court ruled that the two-year statute of limitation applied to certain things. It applies to his 2008 assertion that he's entitled money from being, his time barred by the two-year statute of limitation. The only claim that he is left with by that Supreme Court order is his, the stop order in 2011, when Fairhope stopped him. And I say your defense, among other defenses, you've got more than I'm talking about because they've been pleaded. Your defense is he's never complied with the Corps of condition requirements. He has never satisfied the conservative easement that was, where they were supposed to put on that property. And he has never gotten the authorization of Fairhope or Baldwin County. Now, y'all got a, an agreement with Baldwin County, as I understand it, whichever the more strict regulation is on subdivisions would apply. Well, you, you've got one, and, and Baldwin County had one. I recommend to you, in what I presented, that in your subdivision consideration, what you're going to do, that you adopt 5.2.2 of the Baldwin County regulations, because that's the one that says, "We're not going to allow a new structure to be built on wetlands." The only thing we're going to consider is whether there needs to be some filling to get, as an access to get to an already-built building. Now, do not go to the present Baldwin County subdivision regulation. I don't, it's not 5.2.2 anymore, it's 10-point something, because now, it's been changed, and it starts off saying, "Unless approved by the Corps," okay? Which I don't understand. I don't, I've talked to Mr. Dias, your, your now planner, and he was present when all that went on. I don't know if it, I don't know how to say this, but it's curious that Mr. Breland's attorney, who represents him in the proceeding, is the attorney for Baldwin County that proves, that changes these regulations. So, that's why I submit to you that you look at that. Now, listen, let me, one more thing about Mr. Breland. I hope I'm not taking my...
I'm going to have to wrap it up soon.
Mr. Breland, I have, what you've got in the wetlands is a natural filtration system that helps prevent any toxins, or things that should not go into Mobile Bay. I'm, I'm 82 years old. I've been over here all my life. I'm, I'm afraid now at times to have my grandchildren go in the bay because of the pollution and the sedimentation that exists. So, I, I hope you would look at that. I've got a lot next to my lot where I live, and I don't need to spend a lot of time on this. It's involved in this proceeding, let me just say that. Mr. Breland, I tried to work out something with Mr. Breland about the use of that 50-foot strip. There is certain property located, that he bought, that has a right to use the 50-foot strip as access to Mobile Bay. It's just, and I've got the description of that, not all of it, just some of it. Tried to work out an agreement with Mr. Breland whereby, can't we solve this, and maybe, he wanted to put a house there as opposed to use of it. So, I drew up an agreement based upon our conversation. Here it is, Mr. Breland. If you don't agree with that, want to change it, let me know. Never heard from him. I signed it, the people, the abutting property owner signed it, we sent it to him, said, "Sign it if it's okay." Never heard from him. Seven months later, I had to write him and tell him I withdraw my authorization on, on that. To my, Mr. Breland, if he has proposed a settlement to Fairhope on settling his, the issues. Mr. Breland went to court, named me, named the abutting property owners on the other side of that 50-foot strip as defendants, but through him and his attorneys, we were never served. We didn't know anything about it. I find out almost three years after he has been to court in that proceeding, where he got a judgment quieting title in his name to the 50-foot strip, okay? With subject to certain things. There is a, there's a legal authority in Alabama that a judgment procured by fraud can be set aside anytime within three years after that judgment's rendered, and it can be done by a separate lawsuit, and that's what I did. I have in front of me where the judge, listening to that case, set that judgment aside because it said Mr. Breland had perpetrated a fraud upon the court. Let me tell you what he did. His testimony was, me and my neighbors on the other side had been served. Yeah. This is a friendly proceeding, yes, and that's why Killian and the hunters on here, yes. Didn't know a thing about it. So, then, in some of the, after, after I had it set aside, Mr. Breland enters into negotiations with Fairhope to sell Fairhope that property, and there's a meeting set up between him and Ms. Debbie Quinn, and who was a council member at that time. I got luckily invited to it, and it was presented that if Fairhope bought all of that property back there, he would be getting a 50-foot lot that's worth a million dollars. You've got a confirmation of that by an email that was sent by his representative to Debbie Quinn. I was at the meeting, and I said, "I hope Fairhope doesn't settle this case by, by his property, because that is not worth a million dollars." I mean, all he has is an easement to go across that, but with certain property that he owns in the, in the past. Thank you for listening. I could go on. If you'll please look through what I have presented, and I'm asking Fairhope to enforce the ordinances that are on the books that prevent Mr. Breland from filling that property and erecting a subdivision. Thank you.
Stay right there if you don't mind. I want to ask the council or the mayor if you have any questions, and I did, do want to instruct you that, you know, this is being litigated, so I would be cautious about what you say or what you ask, but if you have any questions, that may be a piece of information that you might find helpful to ask Mr. Killian. Also, if our attorneys want to ask a question, I guess that you could, if you'd like. Do you have any specific questions?
I don't.
I ask my questions to Matt, so...
Okay. Yeah, and I, we appreciate your presentation, Mr. Killian, and all of the information, and the book, and I know that the council and the mayor will look through this and, and keep those comments in mind, because we do all want what's best for Fairhope, and we do want to enforce our laws, and we also, you know, we want to mitigate risk as well.
If I could ask the people who are here that support what I've said, to raise their hands, please, at least, so you'll know that there's some group that, that, that I'm not the only one here.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, spending your time here, tonight. Yeah, we'll keep... Okay, we'll move on to budget discussions, and I don't have any particular order that I want to go in on this council. I have about seven or eight different items that I would like to discuss. Jill, we might need you up here. You want to come up here to the table? Councilman Conyers, do you want to go first?
I can. I had, let's see, I had some questions. I was able to meet just briefly with Jill and the mayor while we were preparing for this, so I've got some of my questions have been addressed. I did want to point out, just, I know there were some people here probably about the library. That was an idea that had been proposed or floated out there by the mayor, but that's, that's not in this budget, so there's no proposed takeover of the, of the city of the library in this budget. So, just wanted to let y'all know if anyone was here on that issue. I guess I had a question on salaries and some of the jobs, and I don't know if that's something that y'all have as well, but I know, I talked to Jill about that. We have some different proposals. We've got quite a few vacancies, and there's hiring freeze in place. One issue that I had, one question I had, is whether or not the personnel board has already been, whether or not they've already signed off on this, or what the process is. Do we approve this and then go to the personnel board, or do they sign off on it and then come back to us and tell us positions are good? What's the, what's the order?
Well, I think what, what the protocol is, is if there is a new job description, that we would look for a recommendation from them. If it's just adding additional positions of the same description, whether it be a lineman, let's say, for the electric department, then that would be up to the supervisor tries to convince the mayor, and then the mayor decides whether or not she wants to put it in the budget, and then it comes to the council, and we could leave it in or take it out. Now, I just made up linemen, so if there are any linemen in here that are offended by that, I'm just, I'm just using that as an example.
And most of these positions were done in September of last year.
Okay.
So, that's why it hasn't changed much.
Let me ask you that question, Mayor, if you don't mind, because I had a follow-up question with that. That was actually your top two, or two of my top two, Councilman Conyers, was that there, as I understand it, there are 31 positions in there, I believe 24 are full-time, and then, I guess that would leave seven part-time positions?
I think the part-time y'all have already approved, because it's seasonal.
Yeah, we, we approved the filling of them if they were, that's if they're in the budget. They're not subject to the hiring freeze, but if it's a new position, it has to be budgeted.
All of those positions are in the budget. All of the positions that are in the budget book for...
But are they in the past year's budget? Because all of our resolutions were just continuations of last year's budget. So, if they're a new part-time position, in other words, we're going from four lifeguards to eight lifeguards, there are four new part-time positions. The four that might be vacant could be filled, but the four that would be added could not be filled because the budget hasn't been approved.
I mean, I don't know, we gave a detailed Excel spreadsheet to y'all that showed an opening, it's, was the detail that you wanted from the meeting. And so, that was given to y'all Thursday, that you can see if they're new and they have not been hired, you know, by the time they're hired, almost the whole year's gone for the budget. So, a lot more detail was spent on personnel, but the difference in savings from the original presentation was, my, my savings was 30,000, now it's closer to 60,000, so, when that detail was put together.
I, I guess my concern is I don't know how we can add 31 people and save money on, on salaries, and, and because if we put them in from now to the end of the fiscal year, and that's what numbers went into the budget, we're going to have a real problem next year trying to balance the budget when our revenues don't equal our expenses, because we're going to have to pay those people for 12 months. And that is a, a huge concern of mine. 31 positions and put whatever number you want out there, 20,000 a position or 30,000 a position, that's 900,000 plus healthcare, plus FICA, you're probably looking at a million and a half dollars. So, if it's 750... So, if it's seven hundred and fifty thousand this year, it's going to be a million and a half next year.
I mean, before you go on, that their lot goes into this and the budget does change, that's why we're going to be looking at it quarterly and no longer annually. But a lot of these positions are, have, like I said, they were requested long ago. We are not putting in the cost of living raise and merit until starting in September, and it will be merit.
Mayor, I would like for you to say that you're recommending that instead of, "We are going to do this and we are going to do that." It really kind of takes away the council's authority to make the decision of what we are going to do and what we're not going to do. I've just heard you say that through these discussions so many times. We want to work with you together, and you keep saying "we," but these are your budget recommendations that have not been adopted by the council yet. And so, if you would just give us our...
Well, let me just reword that so we can move on.
Give us our due and let us do...
The presentation budget that you have, and we discussed in our meeting when we met one-on-one, was that was the difference. And what is not in there are all the presentation that I gave with all the other ways that we can save money. That is not in the budget either. But these, you know, people retire, that we have some long-term employees that are retiring. Some are not going to be rehired. A lot of them are, you know, rehired, are filling in for people who have left for various reasons, because this is, most of these positions were requested back in September, not a lot's changed since September. So, I mean...
But if they're new positions, how are they filling in for people?
They're not new positions. They are. Do we have, the detail...
Looks like there's five new positions based on this spreadsheet.
And the rest are just filling vacancies?
There's some new vacancies, there's some retiring vacancies, and there are some seasonal vacancies. But it looks like the five new positions being created, there's a planning tech, a neighborhood services specialist, a tourism and events coordinator, a PR and communications specialist, and then a forensic IT officer, according to this.
That's what I want to hear.
That's correct.
Five new. That was what was sent to you, that detailed after our last meeting.
Okay. Excellent.
Now, I have a question following up from that. The new vacancies versus the vacancies, the twenty-one vacancies, that was from when the budget was first proposed, six months ago or so? What's the difference between a new vacancy and a vacancy?
The difference between a new vacancy and a vacancy, a new vacancy is, it exists, the job exists within our compensation study. Nobody has been in this position, but they need to add, say, a gardener. So, that would be a new vacancy. A regular vacancy, somebody has been in that position all year long, and we need somebody to take that other person's position when they leave.
So, a new vacancy is, it's not a newly created position, but it is a new, a new hire, so in my mind...
What's a new vacancy then? It's a, it is a new position being created.
It's not a new position. A new position has to go...
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about new job description. I think you might be describing...
It's not a new job description, but it is a new hire.
But it's a new hire. It's added, it's added to our employee roster.
So, if you look at it that way, then there's thirty-four new hires, five that are newly created positions, twenty-nine that are new vacancies, and twenty-one vacancies from people that have either retired.
Run through those again, Councilman.
There's five, five new positions, meaning newly...
Created?
Created positions. There's twenty-nine new vacancies, which is a position, which is a new, new position, new hire.
Twenty-nine people added to the roster that went on there last year.
Right. And then twenty-one current vacancies, and that's from, anything from retirees to seasonal...
Retirees are three. We've got three retiree vacancies.
Okay, that's separate, okay.
How many positions was it?
What was the twenty-one count?
There's only three. Where's the twenty-one? The twenty-one is vacancies for replacement, for example, public works director, there's a couple of police officers, correction officer, lifeguards, that's a seasonal vacancy. And then there's the three, so those are folks, I guess, have moved on for various reasons, and then there's the three retirement vacancies.
All right. So, I guess that brings me full circle back to, if there's twenty-nine newly created vacancies, twenty-nine new positions added to the budget. I can't, I can't make the math work on how we're just off by, you know, five thousand or thirty thousand or two hundred thousand.
Some of those new vacancies were in the previous mayor's budget.
Okay. It wasn't adopted. But it's an increase from last year.
Yes, some of them were, and some of them weren't.
Okay. How many were included in that?
I would have to go back line by line, take both spreadsheets and just compare.
Okay. I don't want to spend the time right now to do it, but then, I think that's something that I would, I think that's something that I will spend, I'll spend more time on, in the next day or two. Okay. Go ahead, Councilman.
Now, that was my, wrapped up my question on that.
Okay. Any others?
Just to, just to point out for informational purposes, the airport appropriation of twenty thousand and then three forty-two, talked to the mayor earlier, that was based on the fact that we're already into the budget cycle prior to the adoption of the new amount that we're going to be...
So, that's what the number dollar averages out to?
That's why it's larger than the three twenty number.
But we're not going to be giving them any operational monies for twenty thousand?
Correct, but it's already been given to them during this budget cycle at the beginning.
So, you only maybe calculate five or six, six months of that then?
Well, I'm guessing that if it's in there, that means that the full amount was already paid to them.
Since, you know, March.
I think they just get it in one lump sum.
I just signed the paperwork last week.
I'm not, I'm not completely following all of that.
Three hundred and twenty thousand per month, or per year appropriation starts after I closed the loan, but we paid the previous loan to that point, so that's why it averages a little...
That was based on a four oh eight. And then the twenty thousand that we used to do for the operational, looks like that was already paid at the beginning of the budget cycle.
Was that done, Jill?
October through December, it was based on the four hundred and eight original appropriation, and then the resolution was approved on December the twenty-second, and then the adjustment was done from there, starting in January. Is that correct, Deborah?
Okay, you just dollar averaged it for the year then?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay.
So, the only questions regarding personnel?
I have some, I have a list of things here.
Okay.
You might slide that back in case I have any questions. You go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
Actually, I had a question. I had a question on, on the, when I was looking at the capital upgrades, purchase, repairs, and maintenance, additional outside services.
Give us that tab and page number, if you don't mind.
Two. About five pages back from the rear. Under utilities. Four pages.
I got you.
You have the munis system on there?
Four pages back from tab three.
We divided that up per department.
The munis system gets expensed in the utilities. It's, it's no longer capital. It's basically just travel and training. We purchased the system back in two thousand and twelve, and at that point, it was capitalized, and the capitalized stuff is no longer in there. I mean, it's, it's in there, but I'm just saying, what we're spending now is just strictly travel and training, so that's getting expensed in the utilities.
From this, it looked, from what I was looking at, it looked like it was being done away with. That's not...
It's just being taken out of the, the capital. It is moved, if you go over to the utilities budget where the revenues and expenses are, you'll see it over there in travel and training. It's just being moved.
Right. All right.
Take a look at the next to last, the last page in that tab. I'm sorry, that's in the capital upgrades as well, but I want this on the page you did.
Now, when you say it's been moved to, it's like, if I look at the gas department, it'll be listed back in the gas department, electrical department.
Under travel and training, yes.
Under travel and training.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that going to be under training? I'm looking under, say, the gas fund? Training school and training?
Uh-huh. That thirteen, three, 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 it's forty thousand dollars divided by three.
I got you. I see it now. Yeah, I think that's a good thing, too. Other questions on that, Kevin?
No, not yet. We'll look at something here. That's all I got for right now.
Let me run through a short list of things that I'm, I'm looking at. Number one on the list was the library that Councilman Conyers brought up. I was, I was wanting to see the numbers as to how that was going to save money, but are we saying that's off the table? We're going to leave the library alone?
The presentation that I gave didn't, is not in that budget book. The presentation, I just broke out different items that we needed to look at, like the civic, I mean, the civil engineering that we spent in each department, among many other things that would save a lot of money for the city over time in each department. None of these savings, and a lot of these will be implemented, but they're not in the budget. So, if anything, I know the budget's going to be a lot better condition once we implement those things.
You're saying they're going to be implemented, so are you, are you, are you saying that the library is going to be coming to apartment of the city?
No, this, that was an idea that can be talked about. That's not in there. Implementing things like, now that we've hired, you know, a civil engineer for, over utilities, that amount of money that we spent every year will definitely be mitigated because we have somebody to oversee that process. This person also will be doing all of the rate studies and adjusting rates monthly. That is what we pay outside of that. I mean, the civil engineering expense and the rate study exceeds his salary each year. So, you know, this is why the budget has to be looked at as a whole, not taking these line items and saying, "Well, this doesn't matter." I mean, it's, these savings are not in the budget, but we will absolutely save by just that position alone.
Okay. All right, so I wanted to put the library issue to rest. I want, I don't know, council members, if you can say more on that, but I, I kind of want to say rather emphatically that their library should remain its own board, independent, just like the airport authority, to keep the politics out of it.
What I want to mention, too, is, I probably said it wrong by running as a department because I don't know the terminology, but the way that I broke it out, it's still, I mean, they still can raise as much money, they still get the exact same budget, except we're consolidating administrative costs, which are duplicated in their budget, and that duplication could be broken out and given more money to the library. So, the terminology might be wrong, but it's, you know, it's definitely something to look at. If we can raise more money for the library for goods and services for citizens, I don't think that's a bad thing. So, I think it's, it really just is about showing how we can do better, because the only thing that was cut from that budget was the goods and services to the citizens. Everything else increased, so I'd like to see that part increase.
Okay. Any comments on that, council members? Anybody at all?
Other than agree with you that, basically, I'm not for putting it under the city at all. Whatever monies we need to save on it, we need to do it through this library board, to keep it separate.
Just a, just a general comment, Mayor and Jill, and I know you've given some explanations to this. I'm still a little bit concerned about our revenue projections and the fact that they're, they're very rosy. They're very, in my opinion, non-conservative, and some of them, the revenue projections are greater than they were, greater than the actuals last year. And I don't like exceeding last year's actuals, because last year could be an anomaly in certain departments and certain events or certain circumstances could, if we have a shortfall in revenues, I don't know where we're going to get the money to spend if, for instance, last year alone, we had the back of the civic center fall off, and we had to find a hundred thousand dollars to fix it. Then the back of the rec center fell off, and I don't know, remember how much that was to fix, but it was tens of thousands of dollars. And then, in this budget year, although it hadn't been approved, is we've got repairs to the Quail Creek Golf Course clubhouse. And so, it's good to have a little fat, in other words, underpredict revenues by, in my opinion, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we may be as much as six hundred thousand dollars over predicting. I hope we're right. I mean, I hope we're, I hope we're spot on with that.
Do you have a specific, because this is...
Well, six hundred and two thousand specifically.
No, no, a specific, the specific line items, so we can go over them.
Oh, well, there are, I don't know if we want to take the entire evening to do that, but I mean, I can run through...
Well, we went through some of them in the meeting. I didn't know if there were additional ones.
Right, right.
I mean, we do have, what we did, you have to understand that the previous budget book you had, all it showed was the budget for two thousand and sixteen and the budget for two thousand and seventeen. I mean, I mean, this is...
We had actuals, we had projected, we had eleven months of actuals.
Not in the budget book.
In our budget, we, I had the, I had a column of actuals. Well, it doesn't matter if what I had prior...
I'm just saying, all we, we got most of these, and some of these were reduced. You just have to look at, you have to look at everything.
That's true. I understand, I'm net, it's a net, I did a net, six hundred thousand. So, I'll go through just some of these with you, if you'd like. The recreation department membership passes is predicted to go up twenty thousand, which is nominally more than what we made in, in two thousand and sixteen. That's about five thousand. Beach revenue predicted to go up by, I'm sorry, that's a good number, never mind, wrong one. You talked to me about the sale of the recycled paper. It's going to go up by thirty thousand, over six hundred and eighteen dollars last year.
We're already at twenty-five thousand by the end of February, and we have the rest of the year, so. Again, I think it'll be way more than what I'm putting in there, but I'm still putting conservative numbers.
Cart rentals is predicted at thirteen thousand over, above what it was last year.
Do we use actual? We have...
Beverage sales forward.
To benefit of using this, you know, to date this year.
True, but a lot of those things are seasonal. Like, I had a council member ask me why we had so much revenue beginning of the year. I said, "Well, property taxes, because they come in at the end of the year."
Did you see the percentage increases, Jack, that I calculated and we're in the...
Yeah, I started looking at them.
Okay.
I haven't looked at all of them. But anyway, you know, I could go through the maybe thirty-something odd numbers that I had circled. I'm just a little bit, a little bit concerned with that being, being too optimistic. I think we should intentionally be concerned.
Like I said, on these, you can change these. I mean, it's, I don't think there's anything in there here that is such a, you know, I mean, these are easy fixes. You can't predict an exact number, but we do want...
So, you predict low, so you should, on revenues, so we took what you should predict low?
We're doing, I feel like we did conservatively, because we, if it was a trending number of seven percent, you know, and we had two years' worth of that trend, or seven percent and eight percent, we might have done eight, you know, four percent. But we also were conservative with the expenses. So, you know, it's not going to ever be exact, but this is far more accurate than the one, the budget we had before, far accurate, because it has actual numbers in it.
Here's, here's an example. On sales tax, the percentage increase from fifteen actual to sixteen actual was nine percent. The old, original budget with the former mayor, the percentage increase from actual to his budget was three percent. So, you got nine percent and you get three percent. And so, the revised mayor budget, mayor's budget shows five percent increase.
Well, like I said, I would almost rather go back to last year's number or a real modest increase. Just, just, council members, so you know what we're talking about, the revised budget for sales tax revenue is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more than it was last year. Three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more.
How much more was it from the previous year?
Where are you at? I'm sorry.
I'm looking at revenues right there, local taxes, sales taxes, proposed seven point eight million, actual last year. proposed seven point eight million, actual last year, seven point four. That's three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars difference. It's a hundred and ninety thousand more than what was originally proposed, but it's three hundred and seventy-eight thousand more than we collected last year. If we happen to miss that mark, that's a big, big number to be off. That's all I'm saying.
Like I said, all of these things never, you know, are exactly right, but we've always transferred from utilities for those shortfalls. But I want to try to put together a budget that is a little bit more realistic.
Well, I would always caution on the revenue side. My point I'm trying to make is that you always want to predict low on revenue and predict high on expenses. And I don't want to project high on revenue and low on expenses. That's all I'm saying. I'd like to see some conservatism in there.
Well, if you can tell me the items that you want to decrease or just send Jill what you want to make it, I don't think...
That's right, I will, and that's why I don't want to go through all this.
Right. But again, this book does not have the savings that we're trying to implement. And it also doesn't have all of the fees and things.
Can we get those, how are we going to get those, those savings that we're trying to implement?
I'm not going to know exactly what they are, but we know based on the things that I went over in the presentation that these will have savings. Those savings are not in this budget. That's why I broke them out. I mean, a lot of them, I don't think anybody was aware because they've never been broken out before.
I'd be, I just, let's just sit down and talk about those as savings then sometime. Because rather than just say they're savings that aren't in here, it'd be nice to know at least what some of those are. Let me move on. Strategic plan. We have got to get some numbers. We've got some big line items. We've got one million dollars we need to spend on a water tower. We've got a lot of money to spend on gas line replacements. I would say that we need to do that over time. I disagree with the operations director to do it all at one time. I believe that we do need to, I do agree with his recommendation for the option A on the electrical system upgrades. But being that we paid an additional two million dollars worth of debt over the last four and a half years, every single year, I would be willing to get up the additional debt payment to put that into capital improvements so that we don't have to borrow money. But we're going to have to look at this spread out over about five or six years. If we were able to pay down sixteen million dollars worth of debt, that's inclusive of borrowing five point seven five million over the past four years. So that brings it up to about twenty-one million dollars that we came up with in the budget to pay down debt. We should be able to come up with twelve or fourteen million dollars over the next four or five years to make these capital improvements without a bond issue. I'm really, really adverse to borrowing money.
Well, if you did have that extra money, you can pay this down. The rates are low, and we have depreciation that we can put against this that's not being accounted for. So there are certain things where it is better to have it borrowed. You don't have to borrow it, so you're spreading it out. But replacing gas lines is a liability that I believe needs to be fixed now, not pushed off when, you know, public safety is key.
I'd like to do it piecemeal.
But that's what he explained.
Well, that's what the council gets paid to do.
One item.
Well, that's why he's here.
We get paid to make those decisions.
Well, I think the citizens need to know the liability of waiting also.
It's no greater now than it is, you know, it was five years or ten years ago or it's going to be in five or ten years from now. I'm just saying that we ought to pay it off piecemeal. Not borrow money. Take twelve million dollars.
Kevin, how do you feel?
Well, I will make a recommendation or at least state that I think we may have taken, not thought about the fact that the electrical side of it, under Plan A, the transformers we need to purchase, Richard, you correct me if I'm wrong, take a year. We order today, we don't get them for a year.
We don't want to go through two summers.
And you're looking, that's the eight million that we're looking at for all of that? Or is that a portion of that?
I believe eight million was the total for Option A, wasn't it?
That's correct. That's why I was asking what portion of that eight million were the... Because in essence, we need to do, I would recommend in this budget that we set this up either for this year or a portion of it for this year or next year to get this started in that we won't need the money to pay for it until, I'm assuming, unless you don't pay for it upfront, do you?
No, it would be 2018.
And we've got about six hundred thousand dollars just waiting on us.
But we do need to get those reports in. It's kind of like, it's kind of like this water tank that we've been, we pushed off for a year. I'm now getting this thing started and rolling. I've authorized the ma, I mean, the attorneys to start notifying all the vendors on the tank to go ahead and get off the tank because we will be looking in October to repaint this tank. That's the expense of a million dollars that, again, we'll need in 18. But it has to be done in relation to these utilities. And that portion of it, I think, I'm setting this on a priority system. I think that electrical is going to be the next priority after that tank's built. And that's just me guessing, I don't know. But you have to set this up in a priority system of how the money's going to be spent to what is the most important that we feel is done. And I do agree that if we're going to do this, we need to get started on at least getting these things ordered so that we can start implementing, so that at least pushes us to that direction that we're not going to let this slide anymore. We're going to let it, we've got them coming. You know, we better figure out how to pay for it, whether borrowed or figure out how to come up into the budget. That they are coming, they will be here in such a date, we know that for a fact, let's get it.
Done?
I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
I keep, hey, I got to go find it all again, so go on to somebody else and I'll come back to it. While I find this back and forth.
All right, I've got a few more things. So I wanted to just touch on that strategic plan, and I know that you're working on getting that. And I'd like to just see how that would flow for, let's pick a number, five years or six years, and how we could make the revenues work without. Because if you borrow ten or twelve million dollars, and even if you've got a low interest rate, you're paying two or three hundred thousand dollars a year in interest. I don't think that we need to do, if we could at all avoid it, that is. Cost of living raises, I want to address that for all the employees of the City of Fairhope. As I ran some numbers, and, you know, when you, we've given cost of living raises the past four years, and it's getting pretty late in the year now, in the fiscal year. However, I would like to see us, if we have to do this, and by my estimates, our salary budget with all and part-time, full-time, everything included is about, in the budget as you have it, Mayor Wilson, is about thirteen point seven six million. A two percent of that is roughly two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, I want to offer up to the council a two percent cost of living raise for the employees, any employee that's full-time that has been here more than six months. So that two hundred and seventy-five thousand is probably going to be somewhere south of two hundred and fifty thousand. But we've been real reluctant to increase our revenues as we've been giving out these raises the past four years. And I would propose a point eight percent, so point zero zero eight increase in the electrical rate, the water rate, and the sewer rate, and no increase on the gas rate. That would generate two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. So point zero zero eight is what I would propose. And I would propose, given the employees, a two percent cost of living increase this year.
The rates need to be based on the infrastructure that needs to be done. They have not looked at that yet, but I know Richard's working on it.
We could add that to it if we need to, I agree with that. I don't disagree. But this, just the component that we take care of the salary.
What we had said, and the Personnel Board agrees, is that a cost of living raise treats everybody equal. We want to do more than that with merit raises, starting in September. And that means you're taking the people that go over and above the call of duty a lot more than cost of good. And you're doing it based on, you know, how people work. I mean, it's going to be an evaluation system.
I don't disagree that merit raises are a good thing and raises should be based on merit, but since they're not going to get a raise for an entire year, I'm saying to this council, I would ask for a two percent cost of living to be added to be offset by a point zero zero eight increase in electric, water, and sewer. That's my offer to the council.
I just don't think that's prudent because I would much rather give employees better raises. And you also have to look at the presentation for health insurance, which is an excellent presentation. All of these things are happening in the next few months. That's why we want to go through a great merit system raise that people will, all employees are going to be paid better based on performance and goals. When you take that amount of money and then just give it straight away to everything, then you're increasing some outside the range.
Sure am, yep.
Yeah, I just don't think it's prudent.
Take the good with the bad, so that they could get something this year, something...
They're going to get something this year. We're starting it in September.
That's the next fiscal year.
But it is this year.
Counsel, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
Again, I personally, I feel that they were promised it. I feel that we need to figure out a way to give it to them for this year. But I am, I've been on record and talked to a lot of the employees. I'm not for doing a cost of living raise every single year. But I do feel that since we talked to them and they were expecting a raise in the previous and through this one, that it would only be right to do it if we could figure out a way to do it through this budget. Again, I'm not looking to do it for each and every year that we're here because we can't, we cannot maintain that type of style. About every four or five years, maybe look into it, or four years, look into it.
Well, this is a way that you can do it, and it pays for itself, and you're...
Well, that's correct.
You're recovering the cost of it by doing so, passing it on. Because we've not raised a lot of these rates for years and years and years.
But we're looking at that based on what we have to upgrade. So what you're increasing it is only for salary. It's not going to include everything else.
That's right, I understand.
Okay, well, that's...
I don't disagree with that.
It's going to cost all of our voters more money.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Yes, it would. And then when you pass on the cost of the infrastructure to them, yes, it would cost them more money, which you're proposing.
Right, but it's also building it into new development, but this is what...
Well, it's inflation. We kept the rates down forever and ever and ever. And it really wouldn't even be a two percent cost of living raise because it really would only be in effect for six months. So it really may be one percent cost of living increase this year.
So if this expense is what you all want to do, why do you have a problem with the budget?
I'm just trying to get answers to the budget.
Like I said, the personnel, just personnel alone, which is why you said there's a freeze, is a negative number. I'm saving over that. I don't know why we even have it in place, but do you remember why you put the freeze in place to begin with?
Yeah, because we wanted to pass the budget.
Nope. It was not.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor. You've taken over the council meeting, obviously.
Kevin said that he wanted to see my vision.
Who?
That this was, I pulled up the recording yesterday, live stream, and it's because you said you wanted to meet with me to get my vision, and that was why it was passed. And really, up until, I'd say, the last couple of weeks, it's been tied to the budget. But now you've had a budget now for almost three weeks, and it's very, very close to the one you all have had since November. The personnel expense, there's a savings there. And as far as the numbers look from 2016, they're better. So, you know, I definitely welcome input, but I haven't gotten any input. So delaying this further is telling all of our department heads that you're going to have to wait because we still want to look at this budget when the reason you put the hiring freeze in place was to say you wanted to hear my vision. I gave you all strategic priorities before we took office. I even asked that you all contribute to it. I have not gotten any contributions to this, but that strategic priority was the vision.
Mayor, please, let us conduct our meeting, please. Can we conduct our meeting? You're just constantly throwing the council under the bus for every single thing. You gave us a budget less than three weeks ago. You took four months to put it together, and you don't even give us two weeks to look it over and do our job and pick through it, which is exactly what we're elected to do, which is to question every number in there.
You said it's because of budget, though, I'm asking the hiring level.
Mayor, you're interrupting the council meeting. This is a council meeting, okay? And it's a council work session. I'm trying to get input from the council because we are 100% responsible for the finances of this city. Every decision made in this city regarding finances will be made through this council. I would appreciate it if I could get some input from the council. And if you don't have any input, counsel, we can move on, I'll move on to my other items.
Well, one thing, what the mayor said was taken out of context in the fact that when I said vision, I'm referring to the budget. And I've told you that on numerous occasions, which was our last meeting. I told you I need to see this budget, and we're not going to lift that hiring freeze until I solve this budget. You failed to mention that and tell the citizens exactly what I said. The second thing is that you...
They can look at the nine-minute video.
Hang on, if you let me finish one time without interrupting, I'd appreciate it. The second thing is you gave us this budget three weeks ago. These are the pages that were taken out last week and replaced, which I got Friday. So don't hand me this stuff where we got a budget three weeks ago, that is incorrect. We got it Friday.
It's because of more detail, more personnel.
All I'm telling you is we got the budget Friday, not three weeks ago.
That's not true.
It's right here. These are the pages you replaced.
Every time you edit a number, every, a lot of things change. We went, Jill went to more detail because you wanted more detail on the personnel adjustments. So she spent on each and every existing employee and the openings so everything would be more transparent, each line item. So that's what changed all of the budget, but it's just the personnel figures, which still save sixty thousand dollars a year.
But we didn't get the budget till Thursday. That's all my point is. I did not get this budget, the full budget to look at till Thursday with all the questions that we had concerning the old budget. That's all the point I'm trying to make.
Okay. Any comments from you, Councilman Conyers?
No, move on.
Any comments on cost of living? You have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you all both have good perspectives on that. I mean, I would say if we're going to try to transition to more of a merit-based system, 2018, I think that does reward people who are working the hardest.
Didn't disagree.
I do see that, you know, the cost of living allowance was discussed, I believe, six months ago during the budget cycle. And I don't have an issue, I know our employees work hard, and I feel they deserve something. I'd love to give them something. I also think that long-term and more sustainable program would be to shift to more of a merit-based system.
I don't disagree. I'm just, I found a way to pay for it, and I just want to offer that up to think about. You don't have to give an answer, I'm...
Okay.
Okay, and I got one more. Hey, Jill, I got to ask you again. I want to make sure we're correcting this Munis that I keep bringing up. But when you add the figures that you added to the training school and travel, it's roughly six thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars short of what we took out of the Munis system. Is that going to be a problem?
It may be, let me, let me look just a second before I open my mouth, hang on. Did you look at sewer?
I looked at the electric, gas, and water and sewer. All of them, we took out twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And when you add up what you put back, at least I did, I may be wrong.
Okay, I'll have to look at it.
Real quickly, I'm just, again, you're not a great deal of money short. I was just wondering, just trying to make sure. Because the way I understand it with this system for it to be viable, we're going to have to put a little bit more money into it to make it work. And right now, we're six thousand short, so I don't know...
Okay, I'll look back at it when I get back in my office, when I have my calculator and have all my...
I'm using my phone as a calculator.
Have all my handy tools.
It could be, it could be me, too, rather, doing it, trying to do it rather rapidly. That's all I got.
I want to bring up Public Works Director position because I know, Mayor, that you want to fill that. And I'll assure you that we want to get that filled as well. And you may not believe that, but we do. I would like to have a recommendation from the Personnel Board that the job description and the pay range, and I've seen the job description, you've given us that, but I'd like to see a recommendation from the Personnel Board that states that they believe it to be a good position, a needed position. One of the things that concerns me is that the high end of the former position was about ninety-four thousand dollars. That was the very far right-hand corner of the curve on the pay. On this new position, as it's being proposed, the far left-hand corner of the pay scale is a hundred and twenty thousand, and it goes up to about a hundred and eighty thousand. So how did we get from this bracket all the way to this bracket? And I know that they're an engineer, but I'm an engineer as well, so I kind of know what engineers make. And I'm thinking a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty, I just, I'd like to see a recommendation.
This is something the council will have to figure out if they still want to do things based on a comp study. things based on a comp study, which is taking positions with the job description and getting like municipalities to come up with a low-end, middle and high grade. That has nothing to do with me and it doesn't have anything to do with Personnel Board or council. If y'all want to change that, you can, but that's how we're set up right now for every position in the city. So I put the job description together based on what our community needs. And I think we all can agree that we want storm water management expertise. This is something that we are all facing and it's a big problem. I don't know anybody that isn't, you know, complaining about storm water, especially with the development.
All I'm asking is, we're not, we're not, I'm not disputing your description. I'm not disputing your engineer. I'm not disputing any of that. All I'm asking for is for the Personnel Board to say that this is in line with what people in this part of the country pay for somebody with this experience in this position.
You can change it to whatever you want. This job description is based on a comp study that we do for every single position in the City of Fairhope. I don't have anything to do with that.
Can we see the comp study?
I think Pandora did this last one. She got it contributed by several municipalities, so...
I'm just asking for some baseline to make a decision on.
But the job description, like I mentioned, was sent to y'all a while back. The, the hiring freeze stated that you wanted me to bring to you hiring needs. This has been something we've needed for a very long time. The pay grade is not up to me. I just put together what this community needs. If we spend two hundred thousand dollars a year in engineering costs for that department, then I think having an engineer on staff would be good because then you're not having to hire outside couns, I mean, engineering for anything over twenty thousand dollars, which is everything in Public Works. So we'll have a savings there and we need for all future growth, roads, everything, someone with expertise in storm water. And I think all of y'all agreed with that. So really, the question you're asking me, this would be something that the council would have to change our whole compensation package based on what it is today. And, you know...
I'm just, I just want an answer on where the, where the numbers came from.
But I don't do that. I mean, I...
Okay, then we'll set the range.
Well, I mean, if you're going to set the range for this one and, and you're going to change it from all of them...
Then tell the, tell the Personnel Board to give us the, you know, to make the recommendation for the salary of that range then. If that's what they're going to do, or give us the background data. You said that Pandora put some numbers. Show us, show us the numbers and let us make an informed decision on it.
When I, when I sent this to y'all though, why couldn't you just ask for that then instead of waiting now and then we have to wait until the next council meeting?
Couple of weeks ago that I, or I don't know exactly what day, a week or two ago, that I said, has the Personnel Board made a recommendation on this position? I didn't get a response to that.
Well, actually, it was the fifteenth that I sent you that I wanted to have this on the agenda. If there was anything else you needed, then that would be the time to ask instead of waiting two more weeks. I mean, it's just...
All right. So the next item that I want to talk about is medical insurance. I keep hearing that our medical insurance, that something's going to happen with that, but I don't really know exactly what that is. I feel like the council's completely in the dark.
That email was to, and I've sent it to you.
Oh, my God, Mayor, can I please speak?
I'm going to say, I'm going to tell you, before you speak, that was for a new, a new meeting for y'all to hear the presentation, not for the agenda.
Okay.
And I sent that today.
I, I hear that there's going to be savings in this and I think that the council needs to be involved in these decisions. The city treasurer needs to be involved in these decisions and we need all work together because I want to tell you, there's a lot of salespeople out there that want to sell you a product. Sometimes after doing this for four-plus years, these products are not exactly what they seem to be. And I think that we need another set of eyes on this before we start going and...
Absolutely.
And, you know, and making changes to our employees' medical benefits. And, and I'm not even arguing that there might be something that needs to be changed for new employees only in the future, but we need to be at the table when these meetings are held.
That's what, that was meant to say and I emailed today to give y'all dates for y'all to hear the presentation.
But there's already been, there's already been a lot of discussion. See, you've, you've really already bought into somebody's plan.
I have not bought into anything.
And, and what you, you told us that you had this company that does this, that and the other and you showed us some...
I just gave y'all a recap. Y'all, y'all are free to go out and do things too. And I know that the regions who does our insurance now may come to the table with something. I also met with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They're sending in their proposal. I'm not meeting with just one, one thing. I mean, I just, but you still would have to take time to look at the presentation.
Okay. Councilman Boone, did you come up with some other questions?
No. I was actually going to say that in, in talking with the mayor and that the medical compensations were not going to be altered. They were just strictly departmentalized. When you add those up, those numbers are correct within a little bit. I mean, but it's, it's all, it's also on the plus side of it as far as when you add those numbers up to what you took, what was the total here. And again, just check on that too, but I didn't have any problems with that once I found where they were reinstated in the budget.
That has not changed from the first budget to this one. They're just departmentalized for each one.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that. I understand that. I'm just kind of talking, as we're talking about expenses going forward this year, some of the numbers that I looked at at the presentation at the last council meeting, I, it looks like about a three-year average. Deborah, help me out. Cost had gone up maybe nine point eight percent over three years as far as the health insurance went?
Over four years.
Over four years, nine point eight percent increase, which is probably...
Beginning year.
Okay. I'd, I'd probably say that, that's beating the national average. It's still, the studies show that we're still better off being self-insured than we are buying policies through company A, B, C or D, right?
This is still self-insured.
Right. I understand. I understand. Councilman Conyers, anything else?
I did have one question on the, the Public Works position. I know you discussed having an engineer on staff in the future with Mr. Peterson and if that person's an engineer, would that eliminate the needs for another engineering position?
Let me show you what we spend in engineering. I'm just letting you know, Public Works and Cap, Public Works is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar average a year. Capital improvements, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars a year.